Good afternoon, everybody. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Be aware of this heat, stay hydrated, as best you can. We're happy to say that we have a quorum this afternoon, so we'll be able to start our meeting. At three oh one. Three commissioners have other commitments this afternoon, so, but I'm thankful that we had the quorum. Happy that Commissioner Todd Salem is with us this afternoon, and under the weather, so, thank you for coming out. So, without any further ado, I'd like to call it over, enroll call.
And Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Ochowski. Commissioner McFarland.
Present.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Present.
Commissioner Van Antwerp. And Commissioner Saylor.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, roll call.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor.
Yes.
Uh, next item on our agenda this afternoon is Public Conference on Agenda Item Only. Today, Congress. Harry Dunn. Harry Dunn, move to item four. I need a mo- a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, roll call please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Present.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor.
Yes.
Alright, we're moving down to new business. We have a couple of resolutions that we're about to have discussion, approval. So, the first resolution on our agenda today will be Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Approval to revise Hollywood Champagne County repayment agreement policy.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We want to revise the current repayment agreement policy. Currently, our repayment agreement policy has a threshold of three thousand dollars. So what that means is that any debt that a family owes over three thousand dollars is automatically terminated. We want to increase that threshold to five thousand dollars, in accordance to the OIG recommendation. It also allows us more flexibility to enter into a repayment agreement with families who may owe more. Additionally, we want to change the down payment amount from twenty-five percent of debts owed to ten percent. So by loan, it gives a family an opportunity to put down an affordable down payment, enter into the repayment agreement, and have a more likely chance of sticking with the repayment agreement versus defaulting on the repayment agreement. We're also working with the Illinois Controller Office, and we want to include that in the policy change. They are able to assist us with withholding Illinois state taxes and lottery earnings for families, and landlords who intentionally withhold income information from the agency. And updated policy also clarifies the different types of repayment amounts that will enter into, what those schedules look like, and then more complete information on how to recoup money for defaulted repayments.
Okay, is there any questions?
I have one. I don't think that hardship, what are some of the biggest hardships, the reason why the change?
So this here is really specific to the repayment, so anytime a family may, let's say they come in for an appointment, and they report that they have, that they earned twenty thousand dollars. But somewhere along the line from when we met until the next time we meet, they've increased earnings maybe twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, or more, and they did not report that. So this policy is specific to allowing us more clarity when it comes to how to recoup that unpaid money that the families did not report accurately.
So smoke out before.
Yes.
Excuse me, isn't the reporting, is it thirty to sixty days before, or how you do that? The policy and reporting, I think it should be. There's a lot of times when people start a job, they might not be stable on that job. So I'm thinking, Lily will tell that. When you start a job, and the person first starts a job, they might be on that job two or three weeks, and then quit that job, and then to report that, it takes that time. How long do they have reporting, when they start a job, if it's something like that?
Definitely say sixty days.
I know it's sixty days, so I, that sounds pretty good, because that way, then the person is stabilized. Because a lot of times you might start a job, you put your job, and you got all that stuff going on, and then you don't have, you know, you know, within sixty days.
And then honestly, a lot of the repayments agreements, we even have a minimum where it's at twenty-four hundred dollars. Under, under twenty-four hundred, where we wouldn't even require the reporting in some instances. So this is really in cases where there's a large, a large amount of unreported income.
So what is considered a small amount of income or large income?
Under twenty-four hundred is considered small, and excess of five thousand is considered very large.
So probably.
Are we ready to, uh, more situations, more problems?
We are, and that's why we wanted to review the policy. We really want to prepare for an increase of unreported income. We really want to have policies that allow the agency to properly recoup the money, but also allow the families an opportunity to repay us within reason. So, um, we, we are running into more instances of families reporting no income, when they actually do have income.
Is, is it also, is it, is there a reason for them doing that, and with a hardship in their family, can they not pay the bills? Or what, I just want to know, what makes that happen? Is that when you're dealing with people, and starting a co-op, and jobs and stuff like that? What, um, what's a way that we could aid them to help them from doing that, to doing that? Because, uh, they might get enough money, you don't have enough money, or what's, what makes?
We do have, um, we do have opportunities for them to report a hardship, uh, if there's, you know, but if they're not reporting income, then there's fraud. So we want to be able to catch that, and, but still also give them the opportunity to pay their debts without being personally.
So if they're working, and it comes to sixty days, and they stop working, do they need to still report that, or what do you say?
They do need to report it, but the thing is, we're not always required to add income. But the family still has to, so we, uh, we do have a report, required co-report that we have to run quarterly. We're doing it monthly, just to make sure we can get ahead of it. But we really want to try to capture these instances early, before the debts escalate. But we do require the families to report that income, but we don't always have to add the income. Especially as you stated, when it's, uh, it may be a temporary job, or it's something where they're not earning as much. And so sometimes by the time the family decides to report it, they don't have a job anymore. So it's not always fraud, sometimes people do honestly forget. On the program side, we're, we're working with our staff to make sure that we're communicating that a lot more effectively with the families when we interview them, so that they're very clear about the reporting requirement.
Yeah, and then also if I have to go over those families, let them know, you only can make X amount of dollars, and after that, whatever, so they don't feel like, they don't have to, well, I've heard a lot of people say, "I, I'm not gonna work, because I'm not gonna get anywhere." Hallelujah, why you saying that? I mean, if they're not getting enough for their income, or wages? Because you want to give them an incentive to, to work. You want to give an incentive to get more back to their families, instead of not doing it. A lot of people feel that, if they're working, they're not getting out of it, but you want to help them do that. Do they still have the family stuff, self, self? Okay, that program, where they, when they work, they save money in an estro account, and then, uh, that builds up. So after so many years or months, they need to buy a house, or purchase a car. The program for saving to buy a car, do they still have that?
Yes, we still have the shift program, so it's not necessarily saving to buy a car, but it's for, um, you know, just self-sufficiency in general. So those indicators of self-sufficiency, like employment, education, financial stability, personal.
We want to make sure that we help people get out of property and not stick in.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's always our goal, that's also the local program.
I just hear that talk from some of those people, that's why a lot of stupidness going. Educate these people, bring them in, give them an education class on. You know, when you're here at Housing Authority, and you work, this X amount of dollars goes here, that goes there, and then they're educated on that, and they have no reason, if something like that happened, to not be responsible.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this resolution? I would like to entertain a motion for approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six.
I would like to motion that we approve of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash six.
I see.
Can you have roll call please?
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor.
Yes.
Okay, next resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven. Approval of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Housing Authority and the city of North Park, Connecticut, and a service agreement with Brooks Jeffrey Marketing Incorporated.
Terry, this, uh, resolution is asking for the board to approve, uh, a contract with Brooks Jeffrey Marketing. They are a marketing firm, and we are looking to update our website. Our website is about four or five years old now, and so just to make sure that it continues to be accessible, um, and easy to navigate, we're looking to upgrade the website, um, so we're gonna switch to a different company to do that. Um, so both the backend and the frontend will be better user and navigate for staff and for the public.
I noticed after reading that, that they presented at a couple of other conferences, and also some narrative conferences. So they do work across the country with, uh, both, uh, associations, and they've done some networking with. So how is the installation?
Yeah, we previously, um, we previously had a website with Brooks Jeffrey, and that changed, I think, in two thousand eighteen. Um, but we're gonna try to go back to that platform. It's just, uh, a lot easier to communicate that we work with now, it's free. Um, but it's just a lot, uh, easier from the backend and navigate for the staff who are doing the posting, um, to the website.
Do you remember what the cost of that was?
I don't remember, but I can reach you on the information.
I was just coming through here.
You mean the cost of this current website?
No.
Oh, or what we pay, okay, no, I'm not sure, I can get that information though.
Do you know, uh, is it a significant increase, or?
I think it's around the same gene. Do you remember?
Okay, well, I'm fine, that's fine. Is there any questions on that? If not, we will.
I have a question, as it relates to the material being presented. We will share a seventy-five page contract, or something similar. As a commissioner, uh, I took the time to go through the contract, but I don't have the knowledge in terms of what we're getting. So I would ask that if we do things in the future, that we have a summary with costs, with benefits, with things like that, so that, because it doesn't, it doesn't, I'm not, I don't feel like I'm doing anyone here justice by looking through a contract that long.
And I can reach for a summary of most of the, of all of it, and then kind of like, the features that the website will have, and what we'll be paying for.
Are we ready to, uh, pass this resolution? If we are, I would like to entertain a motion for approval. Motion to approve our Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seven.
I see.
Roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Saylor.
Yes.
Okay, just another little note in regards to, to Mr. Todd, uh, Congress. Just to take you back off of that, maybe, uh, you can, you know, speak or something, give us those figures. Okay. Well, I guess it's time for the executive officers to report, and looking forward to her report.
I, I left my glasses on, sorry, and I didn't turn it out, so. So first off, we have our champion of the month, who is Jessica, um, thank you, uh, who is Jessica. So Jessica, if you would, or Robin, would you like to come up and say?
Yeah, because I just need to, yeah, come on later.
Congratulations, Jessica.
So Jessica is the property manager for Washington Square, Yomen Place, and Healthy Beginning. She's been with the Housing Authority for five years now. And during her time, she has certainly worked very hard in cleaning up Washington Square, trying to get, um, some of the homeless people that go in there, um, out of the building. Sometimes I do believe she puts herself in harm's way when she does that, because she's not afraid to go up and tell them to leave her building. She is always, um, willing to help out her coworkers, um, always willing to volunteer whenever we have volunteer opportunities, and, um, we're lucky to have her.
Yes, I would definitely agree. Jessica is a pleasure to work with, and, um, if we could clone her, put her at the Moore Properties, she's wonderful, and I just want to let you know, you do a really great job, and we know that it's not easy being downtown, but we really appreciate you, and thank you for all that you do.
If I may also, uh, being my department, uh, a client of her department, so to speak, we appreciate the way that she manages the property in terms of reports, and the entirety of the information, so we appreciate that.
Yes, I would like, I'm sorry, saying thank you, Jessica, even though there are some haters trying to hate on you, and I told them that is not right. You know, I love you, hallelujah. So you are doing a great job, and you can't please everybody, but you try to please most of all of them. And some people you just cannot please. But you keep up the good work.
Um, next, uh, we have just a couple of, based on the HCB waiting list. Um, so as you all know, the waiting list was open, and it closed on August eleventh, so Miss Tiffany, our new HCB director, I have a couple of words about, what the stats were.
I'm excited, good afternoon, about, um, the opening of our waiting list again here. Um, we were able to open on August the seventh, and close on August the eleventh. We collected forty-eight, four thousand two, eight hundred and twenty-three applicants, just here in the county. So we are so thankful that, um, we do still know that there are people that, there's a large need for housing in the Champagne County area, but, you know, processing rate is lower, and this proves that. Um, the lottery is scheduled to be, uh, drawn tomorrow, and we are selecting of the forty-eight hundred, we are selecting two thousand applicants to be randomly selected on our waiting list. So that's a huge, um, feat for us, and we're glad that so many people want to live in the Champagne County area. So we do have some stats, um, regarding the waiting list. Uh, we have seventeen hundred plus of them are single individual households. Over three thousand are multiple family, uh, multiple or family household members. Uh, so we wanted to kind of give a breakout of what we are seeing in our community, the need that's there. Uh, we have a hundred and eighty-two plus elderly family households that apply, and eleven ninety-five families that's at least disabled, has one, at least one disabled person in their household. Um, and then we have seven hundred twenty-nine male applicants, and over one thousand, close to forty-one hundred female applicants will apply. And then, um, our average family income is just slightly under twenty-seven thousand. So, and then it has the ethnicity breakout there, um, Hispanic, non-Hispanic, and, um, the racial breakout as well on the chart for the demographics. So we are, like I said, getting excited here that so many families want to live in the Champagne County area, and so that, that lets us know that we do have a community that loves where they live, and they want to be here, and we want to do our best to uphold Michigan vision as the executive director, as leading our force. Thank you, Lily.
One more question I have. Oh, okay. With the rate that you do the lottery, you only pick two thousand. Yes. So would it have, come back and reapply again? Yes, they have to reapply the next time we have, um, opening. What we were suggesting to families, just as an option was that if they have multiple family members that are eighteen or older in the household, that all of them apply, and give them a better option. So that makes it easier for family members to at least get somebody's name on the list, and so that, or broadens their horizon just like the regular lottery, because it gives them a better chance to be selected. One other big question I want to ask, was the person I suggested, I didn't know. Uh, they were, they're applying for that waiting list, and their waiting list, if they get picked, and if they go somewhere and get in a place where it counts on just their income, can they still get a comeback if they did get chosen to get the voucher? Yes, yes. Okay, I didn't know what you're talking about. So if they, you said that they just actually go by their own place or the time period, they go by their income, can they use their voucher? Did they accept the voucher search? But they won't be, they'll be allowed to use their voucher.
Okay, I know.
Yes, for sure.
I know you said it's random.
Yes.
Everly get any kind of priority?
No preferences necessary, just date and time, everybody who applied between the seventh and the eleventh, they're in the pool. And then the, the company, I think, is happy, is going to make a selection just randomly.
And we haven't had preferences for, um, twice in time. It's just, uh, I just waited for, for the, the process.
I just wondered, did elderly got any kind of experience in this?
No, everybody's waited the same. So, did we ever think about, if you have that many people applying between those three days, that those people that didn't get on this time, we can't do that the next time, you know, we'll do something? You know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, if you have four thousand people applying, you're gonna do two thousand in lottery. The ones that didn't come off the lottery, can we use their names the next time we have a lottery? They, they go away.
Yeah, they, they'll have to be applying.
They'll have to be applying.
And then, you know, part of that is to want to keep the list fresh, for people who, you know.
Do we all just have a lottery, though, for the next time, confusing?
Actually, I've been hearing done a lottery.
That's pretty much the, the, the industry standard, is to do a lottery, and we have an independent person to do it, so we keep our hands out of it, so we don't select people, you know. I was just thinking, way back in the day, I mean, way back in the day. Yeah, way back in the day. If we have a lottery, I didn't know. No, way back in the day, you were right, they did preferences, date and time, was that the application preferences, and it was either, you know, disabled, or fa- or, but we do have our QBB waiting lists that are open for fifty-five and above, which we consider elderly here, so they, they stay open pretty much throughout the year. Um, and so that gives the families an opportunity to, to be on the waiting list as well for that, but they also can be on both. Because I was thinking, when you said, uh, uh, disabled, or handicapped, or something like that. I, I, usually, hallelujah, I don't know, but usually, I thought they get a preference. I didn't know, but it could be, I ain't gonna do no suggestions, ain't my business, I just, I'm a little shot. Hallelujah, I'm gonna be back on back way.
Suggestions, always good.
Any other questions about the waiting list? That's a good question, though. Yeah, the question, the thing I was thinking of, just to think of, is that if you did have a lottery, you had the elderly and the handicap, uh, you do lottery, you do the same amount of lottery, but you give them a preference. I don't know, he brought up the preference thing, that's what made me, but I don't know. I'm gonna let her decide, because that's why we put her in charge, okay? Hallelujah.
So, um, next month, we will bring back, um, the results of the lottery, and give you some of those items, and do a graphic, to see how, how it turned out.
Yes. Okay, we'll have something to compare to, to see how many elderly, this ain't a parent's base today. Um, and we also did a landlord engagement event. We want to, we're doing these here, uh, at the agency once a month now. Uh, we were doing them quarterly, but we found it more advantageous for us to do a monthly, so that we can connect with our partners. Uh, we, we really do want to make sure we let our landlords know, and owners know, uh, property management companies know that we're in partnership with them here at the Housing Authority, and that the more they know, the more we share among each other, we can understand their plight, and they can understand how this agency operates. And also the upcoming changes, we are getting a chance to, um, enlighten them on the rules and regulations, and update them on things that they may have not remembered. This last, uh, meeting that we had, the topic was landlord incentives, but they, all landlords love money, right? So they were tuned in to listen to the incentive part, and also, we just gave them an update on the inspection process, so they will be more aware of typical things that the inspector kind of experiences when he goes out to look at their units. And so therefore, we all can work together to make sure that these things are done prior to. So we had a great time. Uh, we're looking forward to our next one, which is September the twentieth, um, will be held here on Wednesday from eleven thirty a.m. to one p.m. Okay, good job. Thank you. Any questions?
So, um, this month, we, or the chatroom also held our, our all-staff meeting, so we've been doing this quarterly. Uh, our topic this month was diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, and some of the topics covered, um, were, you know, just being inclusive about different pronouns, and, um, different age groups, and how to, um, work with our clients, uh, as best as we can, respecting, um, their boundaries, but also our coworkers. And so it was a really great, a really, really great training, we got a lot of positive feedback from the staff. The gentleman who trained us, uh, his name was Scott Davis, and he was out of, uh, Michigan. Um, so it's about a two and a half hour training, um, and then following the training, we did take the staff out to Lake of the Woods to enjoy, um, some, um, barbecue, Andre barbecue for us, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, Joe DJing, so that was fun. I think we have some photos, but okay, maybe not. All right.
No photo, but let's fly.
Also wanted to congratulate Dr. Henry, he was given a certificate of appreciation from Illinois Nowrow for serving on their, uh, their, for the Illinois Nowrow Board, so congratulations, Dr. Henry, and thank you for, for serving and representing the Housing Authority in that way. We hosted our resident feedback sessions for, um, Officer Steer Place renovation. These, we had about twenty-five residents or so come out, and it was, um, it was pretty, it was pretty good. I think the biggest, um, the biggest concern, or the biggest thing we heard from the residents is that they want safety and security upgrades, and they would prefer more safety and security upgrades as opposed to amenities. Uh, and so we have discussed with, uh, with architects, um, and so we're building that feedback into our, um, into our final design. Some of the things that we're looking at is five entry on the, um, elevator doors, uh, five entry in, in the hallways, is just trying to secure some of these areas that the residents are finding, um, to be challenging. So hopefully, this will really, um, improve, uh, the quality of life for the residents over at Steer Place. Some of the fun things that they wanted were a library, um, they wanted the library stocked with books, that, that requires a workroom for the staff. Uh, so we got, yeah, they also asked for a pottery room, apparently that used to be at Steer Place. And so they wanted a, a, and a pottery wheel, and a room, a art room, um, to do some artwork and engage in that way. And so, um, one of our goals, um, after the renovation, we took, to, you know, probably work with the university or, um, some of our local partners to try to, um, bring in some, some arts and, and engagement for our seniors to improve their quality of life there, and then other, uh, life enriching activities. Also, our, um, LS S team hosted a back-to-school event over at Oakwood Trace. It was really fun, they had a food truck out there, a bounce house. They gave away over, uh, a hundred and twenty-one school supply kits, and twenty-five children got their hair cut or hairstyled. So they had hair braiders in there, they were braiding the kids' hair, and also, um, barbers who were cutting the boys' hair. So that was really nice to see, a lot of families came out, and we got to engage with Oakwood Trace in a different way than we have, you know, in previous years. And so, um, it's also, um, been a pretty quiet summer over at Oakwood Trace. I think some of the changes that we've made have really helped, so I do thank the board for allowing us to make those changes that were necessary there. And also the United Way Victory Revival has really helped as well, to get those rear door view cameras there, and just more onsite engagement, and having staff presence, that's been great. Okay, so the UG program graduation was obviously, they graduated early graduates. Mental toughness began on July twenty-fourth, so they have, uh, new students here, um, and then. Um, and then they took graduation trips to sixth grade. And this is a picture from graduation. Um, Chief Timothy Tyler was our guest speaker. He did a very good job. Uh, he's, uh, still somewhat new to the Champaign community. And so, it was really nice, um, to, to have Chief Tyler there and to have him speak about, um, his, you know, his life experiences and really be vulnerable with thinking. Because I think sometimes they look at the police and see, you know, what, what do they call them? The obstacle.
Call them obstacles.
They think the police are against them. But to really hear Chief Tyler's story and his background and engage with the youth in that way, I think it was really impactful to show that, you know, he came from very comfortable beginnings. A lot of stuff, like to how they grew up, whether they, you know, dropped out of high school and are now returning, you know? Um, he has, so, it was really great to have him there. Um, so, just wanted to share a couple photos from that event.
Sure.
I think, uh, our graduate weekend, we had a, a lot, a large number in this graduating classes, as large as one. But, but the crowd was very enthusiastic, really, really, uh, they seemed to be very engaged. And, uh, I, as I stated before, it's just, the program is, uh, is growing by leaps and bounds. And that's a tribute to all of the staff and, and everyone. I said it before, it was sounding like a program. But it was a very, very enthusiastic crowd. And, uh, I was really pleased. And, and they keep getting better and better and better. And, and it's, that's, that's great too. So, uh, I mean, it was, it was water to water. You know, we, if we have, if we keep growing in numbers in terms of graduations, then I feel like growing. And, uh, so, I just want to share that with, with the educational staff and, and, uh, the people that put that together. Because it was truly what, uh, amazing graduation. And the DJ was nice, played nice appropriate music, and that was nice to add a touch. I might add that, uh, the cookies were gone in five minutes. The lemonade was gone in five minutes. Your staff might want to take a little look at that.
It looked like it was pretty good. Sometimes you guys have to remind me of those events. And also, with the residence event, um, put me on that email or something because I feel a little left out because I don't really think the mission and those show up and some of that stuff. The people are going to think I'm not supporting them. So, add me on to that, uh, email for events for the residents so I can come around or attend after show up and be supportive.
Okay.
And remind me of your graduations, because I love those kids, hallelujah. And I got myself over there, hallelujah. But I have my things going on too, but I will get there.
I'd like to say one other thing too. Commission requirement, can you give us your, your take on the graduation?
Put me on the spot. Also, I, I, I found it very exciting. People loved it. I mean, the place was completely packed. It was standing room only, uh, fun. Rev over there did a great job. And seeing, I mean, it was just a fantastic atmosphere. And I had a really great time. Seeing those kids crossing, excited, how excited they were just to cross and get a, a certificate of graduation, uh, a period of accomplishment was very, very, uh, thrilling. And I think a lot of those kids are going to be very successful in life.
That is so great. And even seeing Police Chief there, to me, that was a very good incentive. Because with the Police Chief being there, and I'm not trying to get off on heat, but with all those gun violence for those age range of kids, I know he wanted to be there and be supportive. Hallelujah, because as you can see, there are some other kids who's doing some part of it. So, that's why your program is so successful. Because you are dealing with use, use to age of the things that we got problems with going on right now. And that's very vital to have a program to be successful to deal with these use. That's right.
All right, and then next up, we have a, um, a student spotlight. We don't have a student of the month yet because the program has just gotten started. So, instead of a student of the month, we're doing a student spotlight. So, Ms. Shavon is going to come up and give a little explanation of some of our student spotlight.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Okay. So, we're super excited to move into our second cohort of this year. So, representing the class of Fall two thousand twenty-three is Amani Walker. And so, I had staff come together and come up with a blurb of why they chose this young lady. So, Amani came to Butteville with a mindset to change her outlook on the education system. She chose to attend Butteville because it would give her an opportunity to get her diploma and further her education. She would like to break cycles of bad habits and depression. Since attending mental toughness, Amani has shown great strides and change. She has pushed herself beyond her limitations and has become an engaging student. Amani has a beautiful smile and a light within that glows outwardly. Amani is our student president, chosen by her fellow peers. We, the Butteville staff, are proud of Amani and look forward to being a part of her future success.
We look forward to seeing what's going to happen with Ms. Amani. All right, thank you, Ms. Shavon. Uh, upcoming events, I'm sorry, I have all staff meeting on here still, but, um, we have the FODA legislative conference. I believe I have all reservations from commissioners for that, um, as well as the, um, the NARO conference, which is October sixth through the eighth. Um, I, I believe we've gotten everybody on that as well. Um, and so, other, other than that, I did want to make the board aware that we'll probably be sending out, um, a, a meeting, not a meeting, but a, a email in the next couple of, uh, days or so because we have our MTW plan that we're working on. And it, it needs to go through a public comment period. And then following that public comment period, we want to get it approved. Um, the problem is, we made a special board meeting. And so, my, what I'm going to ask is, would the board like to move the meeting, the September meeting, back? Or would you like us to do a virtual special board meeting to get that, uh, MTW plan approved? And so, we'll be sending out an email for that. Because I believe our next board meeting is scheduled for, uh, September twenty-eighth, I think. Um, and so, uh, we'll be coming back from that FODA, from that FODA conference the week before. Um, but just want to, you know, make the board aware of that. And, uh, just be on the lookout for that email, uh, for what your, what your preference would be. And we'll go with the majority of the board parties, whether we move the meeting to September meeting back or if we, um, um, do a special board meeting, that'd be as long as. And then next up, we have our financial report. So, Miguel, can you come over and do?
Sure. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Let's start with the, the disbursements for the month. We paid off with checks two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in July. And that was the most important disbursements. There was a payment to the NARO company for the organizational assessment, uh, which had a total, uh, quota of sixty-one thousand dollars. There was also a payment to their creations, which earned the, the, in the renovation of Five O C Thursday. So, that was, uh, I mean, if it's concluded, I didn't say, it's a payment ninety-five thousand dollars. So, more close to a hundred thousand dollars of investment in that renovation. That is, that is regarding the most significant disbursements for, for the month. And I just want to express the fact that these are, uh, checks, disbursements with checks. A few direct debits, but, uh, things like, uh, our payrolls are actually, uh, direct debits to our, to our bank. Then, uh, there's the, uh, real versus budget reports. And there are several pages as I usually present them, which are pretty dense to read. So, that, uh, the addition of these, uh, very summarized graphs is just to point out the, the most significant, uh, aspects of, especially the, the first chart is the one that has the total for the company. So, following on our, uh, breaking up, uh, the different departments and, and sections. The first graph is comparing the, the, the actual versus budget revenue. And, uh, as you can see, uh, the revenue was actually, we were the kind of what was budgeted. Uh, I think I mentioned before that, uh, our funding in, during two consecutive months that were actually lower than, than usual. I do know that, uh, there's actually several, several people here and, uh, consultants that are working to see how we can, we can get those, uh, that funding, uh, increased. Because basically, you know, the way I see it, if, if we were, I don't know, a factory, we'd be trying to sell more, but it's actually the reporting part that will give us, uh, the money back. So, that's what, what we are working on. The second set of bars compares the, the real versus budgeted expenses. And as you can see, we've been pretty, pretty close there, which is actually, uh, good for compensating, uh, the, the degrees in revenue. I think it's very important that we, uh, we are aware of our expenses and the way that, uh, that we're taking care of our money. The final two, uh, are the comparisons because of the revenue and the expenses. With budgeted, they would have a, a small, uh, profit, but, uh, actually, we're a little, uh, under the, the break even. And that basically can be explained by the, uh, by the reduction in, in, in the expected revenue. If the next, uh, uh, graph, you can. So, I, I also wanted to, uh, show a comparison of our lending components, which are, I want to say the ones that we have control, more control, uh, basically because there's no, there's no, uh, other partner involved. And as you can see, uh, we are actually doing pretty good. Washington Square is, uh, has had more revenue than we have submitted, uh, which is a good thing. Steer is a little low, but, uh, it's not, not too significant. It would be very concerning to see the blue bar half the size of the orange bar. But, uh, I mean, it's, it, it can happen. There could be some, some variations on the month-to-month. You have to keep in mind, we're looking at seven months here throughout the year. So, I mean, sometimes this, uh, could turn around into following month. And the same thing that I mentioned for steer could be said for the other ones, uh, that they're pretty close to what was budgeted. Uh, I would actually, I think it's, it's, uh, it's worth mentioning that, uh, is, is doing better than, than what was budgeted. So, basically, just wanted to, since I mentioned the revenue part, this is part of the revenue, which is the, the part of the, so revenue that's brought by property management. And I wanted to show also how, how the different properties were doing.
Thank you. Nice graph. Thank you.
The question concerned me before, I would like to, your mayor should approve the financial report.
I can't, I'm motion to approve the financial report.
All good.
I can't, I'm motion to approve it.
Sir.
We have a motion to approve and a second roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay, are there any public comments, uh, not agenda items? You state your name and add, uh, please, personal file.
Hi, my name is Lisa Dixon, and my address is eleven five Mulholland, Champaign. And, and I just, uh, wanted to make a few comments regarding the youth group program. Uh, and I also, uh, have, uh, have copies of this. So, I'm here to discuss concerns I have with the Butteville program currently being run over the H, HACC. I'm a foster parent, guardian of a student who was a member of the cohort of students previous to the one currently in progress. And I want to respectfully bring forward some issues of concern regarding the program. I've done research and had several conversations with my students, who's unfortunately not yet graduated through Palt, both of her own, most definitely, but also of, um, I believe to be the staff in the program. Also, that other students in the former cohort as well. I've had conversations with other students as well as parents of students in that cohort and in cohorts of years past. Uh, I have many stories I can speak on, but I just wanted to address a specific issue that I curbed up not wanting to extend rumors and hearsay. Uh, and my, uh, I have a couple of points, but I'll start with the third. On the morning of Wednesday, August seventh, I was contacted by a staff member to tell me that my student could not participate in graduation that Saturday, the fifth, as she was in violation of HACC policies. She then sent me a picture of my student in an HACC Youth Build t-shirt with a fake handgun mounting a very stupid phrase to the effect, to the effect of, "You boys keep messing with me and I'll be at your door like this." The staff member told me that she had broken several rules and could not participate. I absolutely understood that. I think it was a stupid thing to do. I had a conversation with her regarding the fact that things on the internet are forever. And she agreed, and agreed that she could not participate no matter how crestfallen she was. I want her to understand that actions have consequences. However, my main issue of concern is that this photo was taken four months earlier in April, when my student was a minor and was and still is award of the state. The staff member told me the picture was posted on Facebook, but would not tell me where to find it. She said that she and her supervisor had decided not to tell me. This is both illegal and unlawful. As award of the state, and I have spoken with the Department of Children and Family Services and the Center for Youth Services, whomever posted and or disseminated that picture has committed an unlawful act. And I and both agencies would like the information of where the staff member got the photo. I'm concerned that the staff are unaware of FERPA and HIPAA laws, especially since I spoke with a parent who one staff member gave information to about my students without my permission. The parent was puzzled as to why this staff member was telling her this information when he had not yet contacted me. And indeed, I had to contact him to get information. We, following all of this turmoil, I was told to bring my student in to finish her final work. I was told to bring her in on Tuesday, but then was told not on Tuesday, but to come in on Wednesday. I then brought her in on Wednesday, she waited for over an hour. Then she was told that no one was there that could help her. As the only person who had the ability to unlock her work online was not there that day. Why they did not communicate this to us before, I do not understand. We then were told to come back on Thursday, but I thought to text the staff member before we left. Thank goodness that I did because we were again put off, this time until the next week. Lack of communication, coordination, and efficiency seems to be a hallmark of, uh, my experience. Lastly, and most importantly, my student and her friend were threatened by another student with a real handgun. They took pictures of it in real time and sent an immediate text to their teachers telling them this. The teacher said they were aware of it, yet that the student did not get kicked out of the program and continued to menace my student and her friend for the remainder of their time here. And indeed, he was in those pictures of graduation. Uh, I'm curious, it seems that adult standards seems to apply. They did not get a picture, my student did not get a picture of this other student's face. And even though my child told them who it was in real time, they said they could not punish him because they did not have a picture. I heard about all of this much later in time and was concerned that the staff did not reach out to me, me immediately when the incident occurred. I can't provide screenshots and text messages regarding all of the incidents above. In conclusion, I think that the idea of Youth Build is great. I do not seek to dismantle it, uh, and I, uh, want to, hang on one second, I, I apologize. I think it's great. I do not seek to dismantle it, rather to have a reimagining of the duties of the staff toward, uh, the students who are in the program. I, uh, uh, this program was a sort of a last chance for my student. My student has turned in, uh, their work to Penn Foster because I knew that the program works through Penn Foster. And we are awaiting Penn Foster's decision about whether or not she will graduate. I absolutely, I want to be very clear again, I, I bring these comments respectfully, but they are concerns that I have. And I also want to be very clear that I want a program like Youth Build to continue to grow because I think it's a great idea. But I just wanted to make sure. But I just wanted to make sure that my concerns were heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that, uh, situation to our attention. And, uh, we will definitely, uh, look into this and get some suitable answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, with special your opinion.
Uh, we have no reason for a closed session this evening, so I put an encouraging note into the chairman.
Some good.
Sir. Been probably moving a second, there can continue, uh, we're considering, during the three fifty-two. Roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a great afternoon.